Hello, Jason.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, Jason, just want to give you heads up, I might want to dial in just as a Plan B. So you see my number pop up. It is my secondary option, just in case this fails.
Gotcha, and just to confirm with you, Mayor, be sure to, if you have to use a secondary device, you want to make sure any other devices that you might have are on mute mode because they, sometimes those multiple devices start picking up each other and get negative feedback that happens.
Okay, got it.
Is now joining.
And, Mr. Mayor, are you on via phone?
I am actually on both. I, in closed session, something odd happened. My team's kicked me out, and so I had trouble joining back in. And I think at the last meeting, we had to finish the regular meeting by phone. So I'm gonna, I have my phone on mute and on headphones, so we shouldn't hear any feedback.
Okay, so, but if you're hearing us, and even if we have both operating, I'm hearing you clearly right now. So it looks to be going well.
Okay. Do we have everybody back yet?
Your city attorney's here. I can't speak for anyone else.
Detrick's here.
Dan's here.
Hume is here.
Stephanie's here.
All right, let's get the show on the road. The city council's returning from closed session. There's nothing to report. So go ahead and adjourn the closed session at 6:05 PM. I want to call the regular city council meeting to order on Wednesday, April 22 at 6:05 PM. And, Mr. Clerk, if you could read the Metro replay schedule.
Consistent with the executive order N-35-20 issued on March 21, 2020 by the governor of the state of California, this meeting will be conducted by teleconference only. The meeting location will be the city council chamber, but it will not be open to the public. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable, Channel 14, on Friday, April 24 at 1 PM, and Wednesday, April 29 at 9 AM. It is being closed captioned and will be webcast at SacMetroCable.TV. City council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at elkgrovecity.org. For members of the participating audience, including anyone that calls in, please make sure that your personal electronic devices, other than the one that you use to make contact through the team's environment or through the teleconference call. But if you can mute other devices that are on, it reduces the feedback that can occur when you're streaming the multiple devices that go on. With that, I will continue. The Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the city council meeting. City council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person, so that all present will have time to participate. City council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular noticed agenda item, as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the council for more than three minutes. The city clerk will run a speaker timer, and after the first two minutes have passed, the city clerk will state on the audio feed, "One minute remaining", indicating one minute remains to summarize comments. During the meeting, members of the public may provide general comments or comments on a particular agendized matter at or before the time the item is called by emailing the clerk at jlyndgren@elkrovecity.org. That first part is J-L-I-N-D-G-R-E-N, jlyndgren@elkrovecity.org. These comments will be read aloud, so the council has the benefit of the comment when considering the matter. Alternatively, if you wish to provide oral comments during the meeting, you may provide your phone number to the clerk via email, again at jlyndgren@elkrovecity.org, with a request to speak during general public comment or on a particular agendized matter. At the time the item is called, the clerk will call the number provided and place the call on speaker, so comments may be heard by anyone participating in the meeting. The three-minute limit will be strictly observed for all oral comments submitted prior to the meeting and for oral comments made via telephone during the meeting. Each commenter may provide one three-minute comment per item. With that, Mayor, we are on to the regular meeting.
All right, if you could, roll call, please.
Let's confirm that roll call, and as we are teleconferencing, we will be doing all votes, but also the roll call orally here. And we'll start off with Councilmember Winn.
Here.
Councilmember Hume.
Here.
Councilmember Sun.
Here.
Vice Mayor Detrick.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
I am here, and I see the next item is Pledge of Allegiance. Wherever you are at, if you could, if there is a flag, please stand or address the flag. If you could, follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Next item is Moment of Silence. At the beginning of every regular city council meeting, the council would like to invite members of the public to join us in a moment of silence. So if you could, take a bow. Thank you, everyone. Let's move to the next item.
And that next item will take us on to approval of the agenda.
Okay, we have an agenda in front of me.
Move approval.
Is there a motion? Second. Is there a second? There's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call?
Aye.
Councilmember Winn.
Yes.
Councilmember Hume.
Yes.
Councilmember Sun.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Detrick.
Yes.
And Mayor Lee.
Yes. And let's move to the next item.
That'll take us to Section 3, our closed session. There are no closed session items on the regular agenda, which will take us on to Section 4, our Presentations and Announcements, starting with Item 4.1, which is a proclamation recognizing National Volunteer Week, April 19th to April 25th.
All right, Chief, it looks like you're up.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Timothy Albright here, virtually, your Elk Grove Police Chief. And this evening, I'm honored to present briefly to recognize our wonderful volunteers for National Volunteer Week, which is April 19 through 25 this year. Is, as you all know, our volunteers would normally be in chambers with their Class A uniforms and beaming with pride, but circumstances currently don't provide for that. But I know, and I did talk to several of them who plan on watching this evening, so I'd like to say hello to them, and just to let them know how much I know the council appreciates them, our community appreciates them. I appreciate and miss them greatly, and I want to express my gratitude to them for what they do for our organization and certainly for what they do for this community. As you all know, because of our concerns for their health and the health of many of our employees, I paused the volunteer program several weeks ago. So they have been home with several other of our community members over the past three to four weeks. We do check in with them regularly, and I know that they're yearning to get back to serve this great community. Before I start, I just want to briefly thank Gabrielle Flynn, who's really led this amazing group of volunteers for a little over five years. And Gabrielle was recently promoted within our organization, and I'm proud of her promotion. And we have brought on Molly Patterson, who was with us for about a month before we went into this new season. And, but she has enthusiastically taken on the role of the volunteer coordinator and has helped me tremendously in this process in communicating with the volunteers as well as in presentation and preparation for this presentation. I'm going to cover a very brief PowerPoint this evening, which really highlights the wherewithal within the proclamation, which is also attached to this presentation. But I want to highlight several of those things, including our three important volunteer groups within the city, certainly our Elk Grove Animal Shelter volunteers, our ambassador volunteers, and then, of course, our volunteers in police service, or as we know them, our VIPS. Hoping to get the presentation to advance. There we go. Nope. We are having some technical difficulties.
I think you're there, Chief. I think it was just, it was fading, phasing in an image. So I think if you just start from the beginning and give it some time, it'll.
There we go. I think we're good now. So really briefly, our 36 ambassadors, as you all know, serve as really the bridge between the city, the services that our city provides, and our community members. You can see them here on the screen, out at one of the several neighborhood events, and their impacts are great within our community. Our 43 now active VIPS did some incredible work in 2019. You see some of those highlighted statistics here on the slide, and these are just some of those statistics. I always like to point out the vacation checks that so many of our community members have come to appreciate, and as you see, they conducted 3,300 vacation checks, and that's a single year. So they do a great job in helping to be the eyes and ears of the police department and in keeping our community safe. Our VIPS also have served as an ambassador, if you will, for the police department in providing educational opportunities for our community members, namely the Protect Yourself Against Fraud, which has been provided to many of our senior citizens within our community. And they also serve, as you see here, as tour guides for the behind-the-scenes tours for our community members, to see what goes on behind the scenes at the Elk Grove Police Department. Our uniformed VIPS, those who you see here pictured, and those who I wish, and I know you joined me in wishing they were in chambers this evening with us, assuming we were there, donated well over 10,000 hours in 2019. That equates to a financial number of, in excess of $300,000, which is a huge number. And since 1994, this number obviously grows every year. But the inception of the volunteer program in 1994, they've saved the city and our community almost five and one-half million dollars, which is a huge number, and they're an incredible benefit to us and our community. I've included a copy of this proclamation mainly because I know how much our volunteers value the data that's a part of the proclamation, the proclamation itself, and then the council's recognition by virtue of your signatures, recognizing their achievements, their accomplishments throughout the years. So I included it as a result of that. And lastly, I just, I want to take another opportunity to just thank our amazing volunteers. I know you're watching and or listening this evening. We miss you immensely. We look forward to seeing you again very soon, both within the walls of our organization and within our community. And with that, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, I will conclude, and I'm certainly available for any questions, and thank you for your time.
Are there any questions?
Vice Mayor Detrick, I just have a comment. Chief, you know, I can't thank them enough for what they do. Many of them are retired, most of them probably are retired, and be able to devote this time to our police department, our city, and our community. Can't thank them enough. I know I've been very active, whether it's at a council meeting or the annual luncheon that we usually have, but there's just not enough words to express the appreciation for what they do day in and day out all year long, and look forward to having them back on the street and back in the office.
This is Councilmember Sun. I just want to echo those sentiments as well of Vice Mayor. I want to congratulate Gabrielle Flynn for her promotion and welcome Molly Patterson in her new role. And, you know, we were, I mean, it's not our fault, obviously, but we are sorry we couldn't see you guys in person at the luncheon and to express our gratitude in person. But, you know, for those of you who are listening, we just want to make sure you're aware. We greatly appreciate all your, all your work in our community to make us a safer, better place. Thank you.
You know, Chief, I just wanted to add, one of the things that I'm real impressed with volunteers is, this is work that they're doing for the good of the community, and that just benefits the city and particularly the police department on manpower. And not only that, but these individuals are well-trained. This is, they are having established career, and they're retired. And so they're not giving your average person. And I'm just so grateful that we have such a strong group of volunteers that continue to, you know, work in support of the work that the city does.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else? All right, excellent. Let's move to the next item. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
That'll take us on to Item 4.2, the Youth Commission Presentation, recognizing the 50th anniversary of Earth Day.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Carrie Monte, advisor for the Elk Grove Youth Commission. Today marks the 50th anniversary of Earth Day. The Youth Commission was approached to present on this topic as a representation of what Earth Day means to our youth. I asked Commissioner Selena Enriquez to put together a presentation for you tonight. As you know, Selena is extremely passionate about her serving, about serving her community as well as all things related to the earth. So I knew she was perfect for this opportunity. I would like to thank her for all her hard work on the great presentation you are about to see. So without further ado, here's Selena Enriquez with an Earth Day presentation.
Good evening, city council. My name is Selena Enriquez, and today I'm presenting on behalf of the Elk Grove Youth Commission. We're here to talk about the 50th anniversary of Earth Day. To begin, I'd like to start off with what Earth Day means to Generation Z. With the climate crisis ripping through our everyday lives, Earth Day is more than a day for Generation Z. For us, Earth Day represents hope for the future and a feeling of empowerment. Teenagers across the globe participate actively in protests that center around what this day is all about, political action. Generation Z is rising up and working more than ever with their local government to make direct change happen. Earth Day is a movement. It's a movement that pushes for the betterment of the future and not focusing on the past, and a movement that pushes for the protection of all plants and animals, and really just about making sure that future generations can appreciate what we can today. The Paradise Fires, as pictured above, really demonstrated the devastating effects of the climate crisis. With the shutdowns across the globe due to COVID-19, we've been able to analyze lower levels of both nitrous oxide and methane emissions everywhere. This is wonderful news, but how can we keep this up after the climate, after the shutdown is over? Well, we have to find ways to invest into renewable energy and clean energy that doesn't rely on fossil fuels, despite it being such a huge part of our global economy. If we do this, we can make a change that can last generations. During this time, we can really evaluate the impact of reducing our reliance on fossil fuels and non-renewable energy and move forward from what looks like could be a fresh start. Next, I'd like to talk about Earth Fun and Sunday, which was a planned Youth Commission event to bring a positive and fun spin on education about the climate crisis, which is typically a very heavy-hearted topic. The event was focused towards younger children and would provide various element-related games that had an educative twist to them. So we would have raffles, and people would win tickets, and they would then exchange those tickets for the chance to win any kind of ego-friendly prize. There could, there was face painting booths, coloring booths, and really, the community was just meant to come together under a common passion of protecting future generations and themselves from the elements and focusing more on recycling. The positive twist was meant to bring in more people and celebrate the fact that we have this earth, instead of making people feel upset about what they couldn't fix. And another thing I would like to talk about is that in the past, the Youth Commission has really advocated for conservation. A few years back, we held a video contest for youth to enter about how we all can conserve water. And the teen who actually won that competition ended up joining the Youth Commission the next year. And this year would have been the first year that we had a really big event. So hopefully, next year, we can put on something similar. I personally would like to commend the city for trying to collaborate with our youth in recent years. The city council has been working with the environmental clubs and high schools campuses to get them engaged in things like the Home Energy Expo and address the styrofoam issue in Elk Grove. City Hall has also provided recycling resources for all sorts of things through a partnership with TerraCycle. Now, I know we're all forced to stay at home, but there's still ways you can appreciate the earth, even while having to stay at home and maybe not being able to go on a hike. There are many ways to make an impact. You could cook a plant-based meal, which is healthy for you and the planet. You could plant some flowers, which can help native pollinators come to your garden. And native pollinators are crucial to a bountiful harvest. You could avoid using excessive single-use plastics and keep our waterways clean and our beautiful creeks. You can even just spend time in the sun in your patio or your backyard, because spending time in the sun actually increases your serotonin levels and your vitamin D levels. So it's healthy for you, you get to appreciate the sun. Earth Day is just a wonderful day for you to just appreciate what you have. And with that being said, I hope you all celebrate Earth Day in any way that you can. And the Elk Grove Youth Commission thanks you for your time, and hopefully, you'll see more of us soon.
Excellent, what a wonderful presentation. Are there any questions?
Mayor, this is Councilmember Sun. I just want to.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to Selena and the Youth Commission for all their hard work. I really love her passion. Councilmember Winn and I got to meet with her and some students on the styrofoam issue and, again, you know, just appreciate her commitment to our community. Thanks.
Excellent, thank you. Vice Mayor, did you have something to add?
Yeah, Carrie, you do a great job with the team and really appreciate everything you do with the Youth Commission. And please send our regards, since they're not able to join us, and look forward to seeing them face-to-face in the near future.
Thank you. I have Selena on the phone with us, so she's, she's right here.
Thank you, Selena.
You're welcome.
And, Selena, this is Mayor Steve Lee. Thank you so much for your hard work, and if you could communicate with the rest of the commission, that city council is very grateful for the work that all of you do. Every time I hear from all of you, I feel pleased that the future is in good hands. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, is there, is there somebody else? Let's move to the next item.
That'll take us on to Section 5, Public Comment. And, Mr. Mayor, what I do have. And Mr. Mayor, what I do have is we have, uh, a caller on the phone line and then we also have a pre-recorded message that was submitted for council consideration. Our caller is Mr. Mark Graham. I'm just going to check with city staff that we've got him online.
All right.
Yes, we have Mr. Graham and he's ready to go. Mr. Graham, are you there? Oh, it looks like we lost him. Do you want to play the pre-recorded and I'll get him back on the line?
Certainly, Nicole. Thank you for coordinating on that. We'll see if we can make that connection. So what I'll be doing is pulling up our pre-recorded comment. And here goes the pre-recorded comment submitted by Ms. Carol Reese.
Hi, my name is Carol Reese and I'm representing several neighbors who live around the Diamond House. This is a detox house on Diamond Oak Way. We have been in contact with Congressman Pan, Vice Mayor Dietrich, and the Elk Grove PD regarding several complaints and issues with the said detox. Here's some of the problems. One incident, the D, uh, clients from the detox house escaped. This client approached the front door and rang the neighbor's doorbell at eight-thirty in the morning and the client stated he was looking for his lost dog. He was very confused. The neighbor was alarmed as they were home with their small children. The second incident involved a client who had climbed the fence, entered the neighbor's yard and was banging their head on and against the wall. Both times, the Elk Grove Police Department was notified and responded in a timely manner. We were told by detox house management that these incidents occurred during a changing of the staff. The second issue I have is with parking. This is an issue as it is a small neighborhood with very limited parking space. There's constant coming and going due to staff changes, clients and visitors and even EMT involvement. Often our driveways are blocked. The constant traffic is also concerned because there's small children out there. The third issue is the constant cigarette smoking. It's pretty much 24/7. Several neighbors around the detox house are complaining of the infiltration of second-hand smoke going into their homes. We discussed this issue with detox house management and were told to, and I quote, "close our windows and use our air conditioners." We believe this is also a health violation and living with our windows closed is simply unacceptable. The fourth issue is meetings and counseling held in the backyard of the detox house. Due to our close proximity, we cannot avoid hearing counseling sessions. During these sessions, unacceptable language is often heard. I believe this is possibly a violation of the client's HIPAA rights. And finally, Fiker Elementary School located within blocks of the Diamond House. Neighbors are concerned for their children's safety because clients who are detoxing from drugs and alcohol are escaping. The oversight of the staff of the Diamond House has been demonstrated to be inadequate. We've tried in vain to work with the management of detox house without success. We would really appreciate the city of Milk Grove addressing these issues as they have been ongoing for over three years and they are now escalating. I thank you for your time and hope to hear from you soon. Goodbye.
And that was the pre-recorded comment from Ms. Carol Reese. We also have Mr. Mark Graham on the phone and I'll touch base with staff to make sure we have that connection with Mr. Graham.
Go ahead, Mr. Graham.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mark Graham, Elk Grove. Happy Earth Day. Today, April 22nd is Earth Day. Do something for the earth today. If you didn't yet, there's still time to do it when you get home. Now, my public comments. The year is 2025. Life goes on in Elk Grove, but things have changed. You see, the residents of Elk Grove are no longer free. They have lost their freedom and their privacy, all in the name of progress. In the year 2025, anytime people go out in public, they are literally under surveillance. It's automated, completely automated. It's in the commercial and industrial zones in the city and it's spreading. It's coming to a neighborhood near you. It's easy not to notice, but some residents notice it. There are cameras all over the city, very high-tech cameras that can instantly take a picture of everybody in a 360-degree radius, but that's not all. These high-definition cameras are tied into a surveillance network that uses facial recognition technology so they can instantly identify everybody within sight of the camera. The system uses artificial intelligence and these cameras to build and constantly adds to an enormous database that tracks and records your every move. Wherever you are, where there's a camera, your whereabouts are recorded, who you are with, where you have been, where the other person or persons have been, what you are wearing. How did this happen? Back in 2020, the council made some very bad decisions with minimal public input and allowed companies to install these cameras and their nefarious system of facial recognition and artificial intelligence all throughout the city. It was in the name of progress. In the famous novel, 1984, George Orwell described a society where human beings and their interests were subordinated to the needs and wants of the corporatocracy, the state as controlled by big corporations, big brother. Truth was the relative thing.
Amazing.
Censorship was the rule, not the exception. Propaganda substituted for news. The powers that be promoted endless war and society was expected to make every sacrifice, including their money, their freedom, their privacy and their lives to support it. Councilmembers, I sent you an email last week, an article from the ACLU of Northern California describing how Amazon is doing exactly this. They are aggressively pushing this technology on cities. If you have not heard from them yet, whether it's Amazon or some other billion-dollar company, you will soon. Watch for this. Please do not allow this. Keep Elk Grove free, protect our freedom and our privacy, and don't believe the lies that the industry tells you about how they will only use the data for certain limited purposes. They should not be allowed to collect this in the first place. Be on guard for the next threat that's coming to Elk Grove soon. Thank you.
And with a quick check of my systems, Mr. Mayor, I do not have any other comments coming in from either phone or via email.
Okay, let's move to the next item.
With that, that'll take us to section six, general administration information.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. My pleasure report on several different items. The city will host a special COVID-19-related town hall meeting, virtual town hall meeting on Zoom next Tuesday, April 28th at 6:00 PM. Residents will have a chance to ask questions and hear from elected officials, CSD and city staff and the county public health officer on our local response, resources available, the next steps as we prepare for reopening. Residents can submit their questions in advance by email to townhall@elkgrowcity.org. More information about the meeting will be shared on the city's social media platforms on our website later this week. On April 16th, the Crime Prevention Unit of our police department, um, held our police department's first virtual neighborhood watch captains meeting. Thirty neighborhood watch captains attended the meeting, which covered topics including mail theft, elder fraud scams, caring for the elderly during the COVID-19 pandemic, concerns with early release of prisoners and registering cameras with the police department. Feedback from the attendees was overwhelmingly positive and participants requested more virtual meetings in the future. The Elk Grove Aquatic Center at District 56 received the 2019 California Park and Recreation Society Award of Excellence in the Excellence in Design Facility Design category. Unfortunately, the awards banquet was canceled due to the COVID-19 pandemic, but we wanted to share that our team did receive this honor for their hard work on the project. CPRS is sending along our award by mail. On April 8th, Shane Deller was elected president of the California Building Officials Association. Congratulations, Shane, by unanimous vote of the membership. At Cabo's An- Annual Business Meeting, held virtually, of course, Cabo represents over fine 500 building departments by promoting public health and safety in building construction through responsible legislation, training and education in building code development. Congratulations again, Shane, for an honor well-deserved. To celebrate National Public Works Week and connect with our residents ages two to six, city staff is transitioning our annual Big Truck Date and Event into a virtual Big Truck Week experience. Fans will be able to tune into the city's social media channels every day, May 18th through the 22nd, to experience a new video tour of some of the trucks used to keep our city running. Each day will also include expanded activities and exercises that can be downloaded from the city's website. Look for promotion of this event coming soon on the city's digital platforms. Now, a number of items specifically related to how the city is responding to the COVID-19 pandemic. Well, again, wanted to, um, just provide this update. This is on the city's website, um, under City Manager Update. We're also providing many of these updates through social media sites as well as the city's, um, COVID-19-specific webpage. So as previously mentioned, uh, two weeks ago, when I provided an update, it's important that I start with the fact that city's top priorities during the pandemic are to keep our residents and our staff safe and informed. City staff are working hard to disseminate relevant and current public health information as well as make vital connections to available resources for our residents and local businesses. I also want to reiterate the fact that Sacramento County is the sole government agency responsible for providing public health services within the city of Elk Grove and the Sacramento region. City of Elk Grove does not provide public health services and we fall under the jurisdiction and authority of Sacramento County Public Health Officer. As of this update, the current health order is in effect through May 1st. We will continue to provide updates to our residents on any changes to that health order as they may become available. The city continues to push out frequent updates through our available online platforms, the latest information from public health officials, as well as our local partners such as the Kasumus Community Services District. Uh, a new mayor's message was recently shared, uh, with our community on Tuesday night. The city's specific COVID-19 newsletter hit mailboxes last week. The newsletter included helpful information to connect residents to resources and other information. As previously mentioned, the city is working to host a virtual town hall meeting with Sacramento County Public Health Officer Dr. Olivia Casiri next Tuesday evening at 6:00. We continue to update the city's COVID webpage, elkgrowcity.org/coronavirus. It's a central hub of information for our residents that includes everything from modified city operations to resources for seniors and small businesses. Sacramento County began providing zip code and city-level data that we are now sharing with our residents on a frequent basis. This allows residents to be informed of the number of cases and deaths specifically in Elk Grove. Due to the closing of schools, Elk Grove PD is launching a 2020 Senior Spotlight consisting of a series of videos on Facebook each Friday to recognize graduating seniors in our community. Senior photos can be emailed to e g p d p i o at elkgrowpd.org. New street banners showing appreciation to essential workers in our community will be going into production to replace event banners displayed along Elk Grove Boulevard and Laguna Boulevard to be displayed, um, all summer. The banners will make their debut, debut at the end of this month. Businesses and employees are also encouraged to visit elkgrowcity.org/covid19biz for the latest information about financing and assistance programs and health FAQs and to sign up for our business-wise economic development email updates. Businesses can also email our Economic Development Staff at econdeath@elkgrowcity.org or 916-627-3338 for specific questions and assistance. Additionally, businesses and employees can visit the city's support Metro Chamber Rapid Response Hub at rapidresponse.metrochamber.org. In addition, the Metro Chamber with support from the city just launched a rapid response business hotline. Businesses can call the hotline Monday through Friday from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM to speak to a business support specialist. Call the hotline at 833-391-1919. City staff is finalizing the left investing emergency investment and relief program, which was recently approved by the city council at the last city council meeting. The program will provide low-interest loans of city funds to struggling businesses in our community. The program is expected to go live next week. To date, the Office of Economic Development Staff has received 69 general business inquiries since March 13th, mostly related to COVID-19. An additional 94 inquiries or comments have been received related to the rent and utility moratorium during that same period of time. In addition to the city's local restaurant support campaign, we've highlighted, started highlighting local Elk Grove businesses that are stepping up and modifying their business operations and responding to needs created by COVID-19. Some of these examples include businesses making sneeze guards for grocery stores and face shields for first responders. On April 8th, the city council authorized nearly $200,000 in emergency funding for the city's nonprofit partners. Of that amount, a little over $90,000 was provided directly to seven local nonprofits to assist residents in providing essential services, including food, household items, rent, utility assistance and other needs in response to COVID-19 crisis. In addition, $100,000 was allocated to provide residents rent and utility grants. Funding for the program is coming from the CDBG allocation provided to the city from the CARES Act stimulus program. Staff are also evaluating long-term nonprofit needs and we're making recommendations for additional funding in May. We're closely monitoring and working towards solutions for our homeless residents in partnership with Sacramento County, the City of Sacramento and Sacramento Continuing of Care. Together, these entities are investing $15 million in stimulus funds in response to COVID-19 and homelessness, which will be used primarily for sheltering highly vulnerable people. Elk Grove residents experiencing homelessness have equal access to an estimated 900 hotel rooms. Also a new item, we rolled out an internal city volunteer program that allows our city staff to volunteer several local nonprofits providing essential services to the community during the COVID-19 pandemic. Now, we also recently partnered with the Food Bank on their pantry clean-out challenge to help restock the depleted food supplies and bolster donations which are down. Last week, Governor Newsom outlined the six factors he will use in deciding when and how to modify the statewide stay-at-home order. He placed no timeline on when modifications of his order would occur. We are eagerly awaiting information from the governor's office as well as the Sacramento County Health Officer on more information related to reopening the economy. We look forward to hearing from Dr. Casiri at our virtual town hall meeting next Tuesday evening. Uh, interim congressional COVID-19 relief funding bill. Congressional leadership and the administration have come to an agreement on the interim funding bill that replenished the Paycheck Protection Program, commonly known as PPP, to aid small businesses impacted by the novel coronavirus outbreak. The deal totals more than $480 billion and appropriates $320 billion for the Small Business Administration PPP program, $60 billion of which is set aside for small lenders and community financial institution. It also includes $60 billion for the Economic Injury Disaster Loan Program and $25 billion for testing, $75 billion for hospitals. Unfortunately, there's no funding included in this latest COVID-19 congressional measure for related to state and local governments. Congressional Democratic leaders had proposed $150 billion for states and local governments to be included in the package. Negotiators on all sides have indicated the state and local funding issue will be addressed in the next relief bill that Congress will begin working on when this package is done. Recently, senators proposed a $500 billion package for state and local government rescue. On Monday, Senators Bob Menendez and Bill Cassidy indicated that they would be proposing a $500 billion fund for state and local governments as part of the next comprehensive package. Legislation will build upon the existing $150 billion set aside in the Coronavirus Act, the CARES Act to help states and local governments. It expands eligibility to include counties and towns with populations of 50,000 or greater. The current threshold is 500,000 or greater. This ensures every eligible entity receives additional funding, increases flexibility for states and local governments to use the funds to plug revenue losses due to the outbreak. Uh, just a few last items relating to specifically related to city government issues. Um, our police department has joined other regional law enforcement agencies to enforce the public health order. Education is still the primary focus for the Elk Grove PD. However, in those very rare instances where reoccurring or blatant violations are happening, then enforcement action may be taken. Enforcement of the health order will likely be coupled with a separate criminal offense. I'm pleased to report that as of today, we have had no citations that have been issued in Elk Grove. The Elk Grove Animal Shelter is reintroducing pet adoptions with new COVID-19 safety measures in place. If you're interested in adopting a pet from the shelter, visit the city's website to learn more. Effective Monday, April 13th, E-Trans, the city's transit operator, temporarily reduced service until further notice. These service reductions were deemed essential due to significant reduction in ridership as well as driver shortages. We continue to provide residents information on mobile testing sites where residents that are interested in getting tested for COVID-19 can participate in preliminary online screening at www dot projectbaseline dot com. We're encouraging residents to follow the city's recommendations on wearing face coverings in public settings where other social distancing measures are difficult to maintain, especially in areas of significant, significant community-based transmission. Our city facilities, we're encouraging staff, um, to do COVID-19 temperature screens as well as wear face coverings. Um, a new, our newest employee community I mentioned, which is the Elk Grove Community Assistance Network, is holding a donation drive in front of City Hall tomorrow and Friday. Um, drop-off hours will be from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM both days. All donations will be provided to the Elk Grove Food Bank. This event is open to the public and all employees to participate. Details on the drive have been shared on the city's social media channels. And finally, like all other government agencies, the city expects significant revenue declines this year and in future years. The current estimated reduction in revenue in the next fiscal year is approximately $13.7 million, of which approximately $5.6 million is from the city's general fund. Total impacts will be determined by the length and severity of the recession, the results from COVID-19-related economic impacts. While the federal government stimulus package will provide a critical lifeline to the city, we are not waiting for help and are actively making cuts to the city's operating we are not waiting for help and are actively making cuts to the city's operating budgets. Recommendations will be presented to the city council for consideration as part of the fiscal year '21 budget process, which is coming up shortly. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions with the council I have.
Thank you, Jason. Are there any questions? I don't hear any questions, so thank you, and let's move on to the next item.
There'll be Section 7, Council Comments, Reports, and Future Agenda Items.
Okay, let's start off with Councilmember Nguyen.
Thank you, sir. I don't have much. This is the first week that anybody with young kids in elementary school, this is our first week of having our kids do distance learning. I've got two little ones, and I have to tell you, they were so excited to be able to Zoom with their classmate and their teacher and be able to chat with them or whatnot. And my kids are going in and making sure that they do their attendance every day and also checking for their work. And so I just want to say, I appreciate all our educators and our teachers for what they're doing. This is phenomenal, and being able to pull this all together with so many young kids and high school kids as well, too. This is all new for us. But my nine-year-old was able to pick this up a lot faster than I was, I got to tell you that. But I want to say again that we really need to appreciate and just thank our educators, because I know it took a lot of time and struggles and trials and errors in putting this together. And I want to thank them, because I feel like my kids are excited to learn, to do this at home, and they're available, they're answering questions day and night. And so I appreciate the school district and the teachers for what they're doing. And then I want to thank Mr. Bearman for allocating that $100,000 from the CDBG money for their rent and utilities, because I know that this is going to save a lot of families. I worked with Mrs. Sereb a couple of days ago and talking through this, because I've had some experience, my office has, in doing this. And so I'm happy to help and share ideas and the process and whatnot. And so I'm really excited to see this be offered out there to our community. And then lastly, I just want to address an issue that came up from several community members at our last council meeting that were raised. There was a social ceremony event for Elk Grove Laguna Forums for Mr. Doc Souza, and many of us, or not many of us, but several of us attended the event, and we presented a plaque to him. And I'd like to see if we could bring that plaque back and get council support to make this into ratification, so formal council ratification at the next council meeting. And that's all I have. And I, you know, I know, Mr. Mayor, the plaque only has the four of us councilmembers on there. I'd like to also see if you'd like to add your name to it as well, assuming we get council support on that.
This is Councilmember Sun. I'd support that. Thank you.
Hi, this is Councilmember Hume. I'd support it as well.
All right, I'm fine with it. This was my initial request, but there wasn't sufficient time to bring it back to council, so yeah, no problem. Let's bring it to council.
Yeah, I'll support bringing it.
Great, thank you. We'll bring it back, and I'll have staff on working on redoing the plaque to add your name to it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everybody.
So let's go ahead and bring it to council first and have a discussion publicly, and then we can move on then. All right, next is Councilmember Hume.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, too, don't have much to add. We had the Sacramento Transportation Authority meeting following the last council meeting. I voted for the transportation expenditure plan on Wednesday night, but unfortunately, I had to vote against the ordinance that would accompany that plan on Thursday afternoon. There was some language inserted that would set in stone, language that was added late into the expenditure plan, and that would make the only part of the expenditure plan immutable. So everything else would be up for review on 10-year cycles, but this language would be set in stone, as I said, for the entirety of the plan, and I just felt that that went too far, and so I had to vote against that. We had the sanitation board meeting this morning. The mayor may have more to add, but it was essentially going over the budgets for the two agencies, the sand board, as well as the sewer district. The good news is that they both have healthy reserves, and there's no rate increases forecasted. But we're going to have to keep a close eye on how the COVID pandemic affects revenues and operational costs. And then we have a Connector JPA Board meeting this Friday. Nothing earth-shattering is on the agenda, so it should be a fairly mild meeting. And then I'd just like to say that I hope everybody out there is staying healthy and staying sane, and as the weather gets warmer and nicer, you know, it becomes harder and harder to accept the isolation orders. But that doesn't mean that you can't get out, take a walk, enjoy your own yards, and go and enjoy the great outdoors. So I just hope everybody's taking some time to check in with themselves through this difficult time. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilmember Sun.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Happy Earth Day to everybody. I want to congratulate again Shane Diller on his being nominated for President's of the California Building Codes Officials Group. And I want to encourage everyone to do what they can to try to visit our local restaurants, businesses. I think we have our, trying to get folks to eat out three times a week. Please keep doing that. Folks are still hurting out there. As for city business, you know, we're doing everything online, so we had a SAICOG Board meeting. Nothing significant to report, as well as library authorities tomorrow. Councilmember Hume mentioned the measure. I would just add that the transportation expenditure plan continues to make its rounds through the remaining cities in the county. Immediately following, our city went to Folsom, passing unanimously. And then Rancho Cordova, it passed last night 4 to 1. And then Ileton is the last remaining city in the county that it will go to. That's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor Steve Dedrick.
Well, I've been staying sheltered at home with both my city business and PG&E business. Have taken the opportunity, as Councilman Hume mentioned, to get out and walk and cycle and enjoy the outdoors as much as I can, but staying away from the general public. Just wanted to wish everybody to be safe and healthy out there, and hopefully we'll be able to see everybody face-to-face in the near future. So, yeah.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. The only thing I'd like to add is I've been doing regular updates with the help of staff, and I really do appreciate that. I want to say a big thank you to the Public Information Office and Guadalupe in particular for her efforts in doing that. In addition to that, I wanted to wish all of you good health and stay at home and stay safe. All right, let's move to the next one.
So it'll take us to Section 8, the Consent Calendar Items. And I am doing a review of my email inbox, and we have no public requests to speak, and I don't have any pre-recorded comments that have been submitted.
Okay, since there is no members of the public set up to speak, I want to open and close public comment, and we have a consent calendar in front of me. Members, is there a motion?
It's Councilmember Hume.
Second motion, and there's a second. Okay, roll call vote.
For the roll call vote, Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
Councilmember Hume.
Here, yes.
Councilmember Sun.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dedrick.
Yes.
And Mayor Lee.
Yes.
And the item will pass. That'll pass all of the items on the consent calendar. Thank you, council. It'll take us on to Section 9, our public hearings, but we have no public hearings signed up for tonight, so that'll take us on to Section 10, our regular agenda action items and recommendations, starting with item 10.1, which is to receive a presentation on SB 1383 and organics recycling.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Can everyone hear me okay?
Loud and clear.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So my name is Heather Neff. I'm the Recycling and Waste Manager, and I'm here with Tracy Goulart, our Recycling Coordinator 2 and Organic Program Manager, to provide you with a presentation on Senate Bill 1383 and organics recycling. SB 1383 was approved in 2016. It will require all jurisdictions in California to provide mandatory organic recycling service to generators. That includes residential and commercial generators. Commercial includes multifamily government entities, pretty much anybody who generates food waste of any kind. All generators will be mandated to separate their food waste from their other trash and recyclables, and cities will be required to collect that food waste curbside and recycle it appropriately. Originally, we presented the draft regulations of this bill in January 2018. And our goal for this evening is to provide you an update on the status since then to discuss the potential impacts to services and rates, and to seek guidance from council to obtain your feedback so that we can incorporate it as we're prepared to implement the required services. As I mentioned, we originally presented these in 2018. Since then, the regulations have entered the formal rulemaking process. There haven't been any significant changes. Mostly, the requirements are the same since then. When we drafted this presentation last week, the regulations were being held at the Office of Administrative Law for Review. We just got an email that the latest draft of the regulations are available, so we're going to be spending the next couple of weeks reviewing them. But overall, the requirements pretty much remain consistent. The compliance element includes implementing an organics recycling program. There are extensive outreach and education requirements. We will also be required to implement an edible food recovery program. And finally, there are comprehensive inspection and enforcement requirements. Right now, I'm going to turn it over to Tracy Goulart, who will cover the specific requirements and the services that will be required to implement. And then I'll conclude at the end of the presentation by reviewing the items for which we are requesting your feedback.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I'm pleased to provide you a recap of Senate Bill 1383 tonight. As you may recall, Senate Bill 1383 sets statewide targets for reducing the amount of organic waste going into landfills. So by 2020, we are looking at a 50% reduction, and by 2025, a 75% reduction. It also sets a goal of recovering 20% of edible food for human consumption by 2025. And our regulations are to take effect January 1st of 2022, so all of our programs must be in place by this date. And it also authorizes local jurisdictions to charge fees to recover costs to comply with these regulations. SB 1383 outlines specific compliance requirements. As you can see here, first, we have that it applies to all generators of organic waste. So generators means, as Heather had stated before, residences, residents, businesses, and government entities. They must be provided with specific collection containers. So we are mandated to have specific container colors, and it will require replacement of most of Elk Grove's current containers. Therefore, we will have black, blue, and green containers. The black container is for trash, blue for recyclables, and green for organics. Our organic containers must be serviced weekly at a minimum, and our green waste container will likely be used for organics, which will require an increase in green waste and organics to a weekly service. Our recyclable container will be the only one that will stay as biweekly. So I'd like to point out that there are potential cost implications to replacing carts and providing public outreach to do so. We don't know the full impact on this yet until our negotiations with Republic is complete. In addition, jurisdictions are responsible for reducing contamination in organic waste by educating generators and screening for contamination. Some of this can be delegated to a designee, such as a franchise holder, and in our case, that would be Republic Services. Regulations will require enforcement, so jurisdictions will need to adopt an enforcement program and associate fines along with that. There are implications for noncompliance. So jurisdictions and generators may be held responsible for noncompliance. Jurisdictions specifically can face anywhere from $500 to $10,000 per day. And generators, also known as residents and businesses, can face anywhere from $50 to $500 per offense. There is, however, a substantial compliance period for generators, so between January 2022 and December 2024, that will allow generators time to kind of get acclimated to the programs. The noncompliance can include things such as notice of violation, corrective action plans, and implementation schedules. And enforcement fines will become applicable in January of 2024. I would like to also point out that these penalties are required under the regs and are not staff-driven. We also have education requirements, and these must be completed annually. So CowRecycle does specify guidelines on what to include in educational material. So anything from print to electronic or a combination of both can be sent out to generators. And we should include how to properly recycle organics, method for organic waste prevention, the methane reduction benefits of recycling organics, the environmental impacts associated with disposing of organic waste, and edible food donation programs. We are also required to have an edible food recovery program. So for jurisdictions, we're to develop a list of food recovery services and organizations with the jurisdiction. We're to develop a food donation guide and oversee compliance for that. As far as organizations, they must maintain records of the amount of food that they collect in pounds, where the food went, and the amount of food rejected. I should also note here that any organization, including nonprofits such as the Food Bank, will be required to keep records just like these. Additionally, for food, edible food generators, they'll be subject to, which would be including large events, large venues, certified farmers' markets, commercial food generators, which would also be supermarkets, restaurants, hotels with a food facility. They will also have requirements such as collecting all excess edible food each day. They need to keep records at each arrangement with each food recovery organization and educate employees about the requirement to recover edible food. There are significant enforcement requirements. Jurisdictions must adopt an ordinance imposing requirements to comply. We must adopt an inspection and enforcement plan for residents. This can include route reviews, compliance reviews, waste characterization evaluations. If CowRecycle finds a jurisdiction is not fulfilling one or more of its responsibilities, it may take over direct enforcement and seek administrative penalties. In terms of what we've done to date, we have reviewed the regulations. We've explored food recovery options. We've developed a tracking database for commercial compliance. We've added a position to implement and monitor ongoing requirements. We are working with Republic Services to amend the franchise agreement, and we are in the middle of drafting an ordinance as required. In terms of the franchise agreement, we have hired HF&amp;H to assist us with that. I'd like to point out that they've assisted 70-plus cities, California cities, with SB 1383-related issues. Our timeline below is as follows. It's kind of a high-level timeline. We have already had our kickoff. We are hoping to review a draft of the new franchise agreement through the fall of this year. We're hoping to present to council in the late fall with a rate increase notice around 2021 next year, as well as organic waste collection beginning under the new franchise agreement either in 2021 or 2022. Now, I'll hand it back over to Heather, who will outline the rest, the request for council direction.
Thank you, Tracy. So as I mentioned at the beginning of this presentation, as we're preparing implementation and going into the final phases of putting these programs in place, there are several items for which we would like to understand council preferences, feedback, any information you'd like to provide to help us during that implementation. Specifically, there are three items. The actual implementation date of the programs, the rate increase options that we can explore, and then some changes that we're proposing to the municipal code and the commercial hauler agreements that would create a three-bin system. And I'll explain each of these three items in more detail on the following slides. I just want to emphasize that we are not looking for any specific decisions. We're not asking council to take any action, adopt any programs or rate increases at this time. We're strictly looking for feedback on these items to guide us as we're finalizing implementation. Any and all new changes would be brought back for council consideration at a later date. So specifically talking about the implementation date, as Tracy mentioned, all of our programs must be in place by January 1st, 2022, which is a little over 18 months away. If we implement the programs on this date, it would delay the associated rate increase as long as possible. It would require the city's program, though, to be 100% compliant on day one, since that is the final required date by the state. In addition, it would provide a very narrow window for the city to provide data and do our first required report. The first report on compliance for these programs is due February 1st of 2022. So basically, it gives us one month after starting the program to provide feedback to the state on our compliance. We could, however, consider doing an earlier implementation, such as July 1st of 2021. This would provide a six-month window for the city and Republic to adjust any programs if needed, services outreach, et cetera, to ensure that we have reached full compliance by the final deadline. However, it may accelerate the rate increase depending on the amount and our discussions with Republic and any feedback offered by council. It would allow residents more time to learn to properly recycle their organic waste and ensure that they are becoming compliant and not subject to any of those notice of violations, et cetera, et cetera, before the implementation date, the official implementation date. July 1st is also consistent with a lot of the past programs and rate increases. Typically, our rate increases always occur on July 1. New programs and services have always been implemented on July 1. Another item that we would like council feedback on is the timing of a rate increase. The new programs that are required from this bill are extensive, and so it will create a rate increase. There are significant costs involved with the new programs and a lot of the services that are being required. Right now, we don't know the amount of the increase. We're working with Republic to finalize that. In our 2018 strategic plan, HF&amp;H estimated it to be about 20%. However, industry estimates based on more recent versions of the regulation have estimated a range of anywhere from 20% to 50%. And fairly recent discussions with Republic Services indicated that window might be narrowed for Elk Grove to between 35% to 50%. In terms of implementing that rate increase, we have at least a couple of options we've identified. We could phase it over two or more periods. For example, you could have a rate increase on July 1, another one on January 1, another the following July 1, every six months, or every 12 months. This would lessen the financial impact on residents. However, it would also lengthen the period of increases. So if they're spread out over more increments, residents may get the feeling like rates just continue to keep increasing. If we do a one-time increase, we could do the full increase likely at implementation. It would most likely create a greater financial impact to residents. However, it would shorten the window of those impacts. It would be all at once, as opposed to over time, sort of like ripping off the Band-Aid, as the phrase goes. The public outreach would be a little bit simpler. There would possibly be less confusion because the one-time rate increase would happen at the time the programs are implemented. There would be a direct connection for public to understand that the increased charges are due to those new services. The last item for which we would like council feedback is in regards to commercial services. With Elk Grove, our current system is a non-exclusive franchise system, meaning that a business can choose any hauler amongst our 14 approved haulers to provide any or all services. They could choose one hauler for trash, another for recycling, another for organics. Staff will be proposing edits to the commercial hauler agreements that would require generators to be serviced by one hauler for all three of these services. So generators would still be able to pick from any of our authorized haulers, meaning that there is still competition and choice for businesses when selecting a hauler. However, they would have to receive trash, recycling, and organics from that single hauler. Requiring all commodities to be serviced through a single hauler would ensure greater compliance rates, both for the city as well as our business customers. It would also improve hauler collection for, again, the hauler and the city. And it would significantly reduce the amount of staff time required to oversee compliance requirements. Currently, our staff does quite a bit of legwork doing compliance checks for businesses that have separate haulers. This would increase with the addition of organics, and we would foresee adding additional staff if that were to occur. So that would greatly save on the staff time needed to ensure compliance that businesses to have all three services. So that concludes our presentation and the review of the items for which we need feedback. We'll go ahead and jump back to the slide that shows the overview of the three items. I would be happy to take any questions that you have and listen to any feedback or concerns you might have about the three items we specifically mentioned. Thank you.
Hey, are there any questions?
Yeah, Mayor, I have a few questions. This is Councilmember Hume. First up, Heather or Tracy, the law will require all new containers so that the color coding is consistent statewide?
Yes, that's correct. Everybody in the state will have to do blue, green, and black. And as you know, currently, ours are brown, green, and gray. And so there will have to be a plan worked out with Republic to swap out every single residential container in the city to ensure that they are consistent. There is some provisions that allow us to use current containers to the end of their useful life or the year 2036, whichever is shorter. But on the date of implementation, January 1, if the correct colors are not in place, there are certain labeling requirements that we would still have to meet. So either way, there would have to be some changes to the carts on day 1.
So if we were to go with the swap out, who bears the cost of providing those new containers? And what would happen to the existing containers, many of which, as you say, still have a useful life?
Correct. So the new containers, if, again, we're still working out the specifics in our discussions with Republic in the franchise amendment. So if we go with new container colors on day 1, that means we're taking out a lot of carts that have useful life left, and that is a cost that would have to be incorporated into the rate increase, whatever that will be. If the city is, if it's determined that we can keep those carts in service and just meet labeling requirements, there are slightly reduced costs.
Okay, and then what happens to those existing containers if they're swapped out?
All of our containers are required to be recyclable, so they would be recycled.
Mm-hmm, okay. That's all my questions. Did you want to go into deliberations now, Mayor?
Let's check if any other members have any questions. Anyone else?
I'm good.
Okay, I don't hear any other questions. So let's go ahead and open public comment. Mr. Pluck, is there anyone who has submitted a public comment?
And Mr. Mayor, after a scan of my email inbox and the lack of comments submitted prior to the meeting, there are no comments on this item.
Okay, so let's go ahead and close public comment and council deliberation and direction. All right, members, who wants to go first? Councilmember Hume?
Sure, I'd be happy. Sorry, I hit the button twice and remuted myself. First of all, I mean, there's so much about this that's just, it's wrong. But I'll save that pontification for when we discuss it in the fall. And I'll just say, as kind of a caveat, that I think good, bad, or indifferent, GALT serves an example of how not to roll out the program to meet attainment here. I would be in favor of the, well, let me back up. I did have one other question. Is there any way to front-load the rate increase so that we can make the rate increase and implementation to separate dates so we can sort of, as I said, front-load or store up a little bit of money to soften the actual rate that's needed for the long term?
Yes, and I'll ask our attorney to weigh in if he wants to correct me if I'm wrong. But it is my understanding that if the rates are directly attributable to the service that is being provided, it can take place in advance of the actual provision of services.
Yes, that's really correct. We just have to draw a nexus related to cost.
So I know that for the sanitation district, when we were anticipating the costs of the Echo Water project, we did a higher-than-needed rate increase at the front end in order to, like I said, front-load those costs. And then that actually has resulted in not needing to do as high of a rate increase as for an ultimate amount. So I would like to investigate that as we go forward. But I would be more in line with putting off the actual implementation until it's mandated. And then I would probably, in keeping with my previous comment, want to look at how to phase in rates or at least make it so that the cost isn't borne all at once and that maybe by spreading it out, we're softening that blow, even if the rate increase comes in advance of the actual implementation. And then when it comes to the three bin, I just want to caution because this is something that I think happened that compounded the particularly commercial reaction in GALT. And that is that you're talking about not just a financial cost from the rate increase, but you're also talking about a physical change in that most of the commercial collection bins areas are set up for, you know, two dumpsters. And to go to that third dumpster, then, is a significant physical challenge as well as a financial burden in order to meet that. So there's a lot packed into this that I think is, you know, it's a lot of good intention, but I'm just, it's how we roll it out. It needs to be done with care. And, you know, right now, the time that we're in, you're reading stories of dairies dumping gallons and gallons of perfectly usable milk and farmers having to let crops rot in the fields because the supply chain and the demand got so disrupted. And so I think this just, like I said, there's a lot to it. But those would be my preferences, is to put off implementation for as long as possible, to look at phasing the rate and front-loading as much as we can. And then with respect to the three bins, I'd like to have more information on that and just caution us to be mindful of the unintended consequences of that. Thank you.
Mr. Councilmember, soon. You know, there's a lot of, I agree with a lot of implications that Councilmember Hume was mentioning, but unfortunately, it's a legal requirement. And so my, I guess, I would love to put it off a little to the last moment, but if it's going to be a problem for staff and Republic, I'm more inclined to go with the phased approach of the July 1, 2021. I think there needs to be options about the rate increases because just, we don't know what the economic climate's going to look like. And I'd hate to have a large hit to folks, you know, a couple of years from now if we're still, you know, really, everybody's really hurting. So I think we should have a couple of options to be brought back in terms of the rate increase. I mean, I think phased over time is what I would lean towards, but Councilmember Hume's option about kind of ramping up should be another option if we can, you know, stomach it at that time. But I would actually lean more towards the, you know, July 1 implementation. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
I'm all for phasing it over time as well, too. I think we're just taking feedback right now, so we don't necessarily have to make a decision on either one of this. But I do like Councilmember Hume's comments about taking a look at other options and seeing what else we can do. So if we could bring that back next before we make a decision. But as far as the options for phasing over time or a one-time thing, especially in the situation we're in right now, I think a one-time thing is just going to be too much for many. And so phasing it over time would be better. And, you know, what we're going through right now, it's not going to correct itself in the next couple of months or probably a year. It's going to take a lot longer than that. So if we can take a look at other options, that would be great. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Hello?
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, I agree to go with the July 1 and phase over time. But one of the questions I would have, with everything that's been going on, is there a feasibility because of the COVID-19 that we can get this postponed? I think this is something that should be taken back to the state level for deferring this for at least a year.
If I could just add to the Vice Mayor's comments there and sort of refute what Councilmember Suen said, this is only a law because well-intentioned lawmakers made it so. It is, you know, it's still up for discussion as far as I'm concerned. And I think that as agencies look to implement this and a lot of the different problems presented by it, I would hope that sometime between now and January 1st, 2022, cooler heads prevail.
Yes, we would agree with that at staff level. And to answer your question, Councilmember Dedrick, the implementation date of January 1st, 2022 is written into the bill itself and not the regulations. So there would have to be some sort of action at state level in order for there to be any sort of change in the required implementation.
Is staff looking at taking that to Assemblyman Cooper or someone else to possibly carry that, to have that?
We would like that opportunity. We have been providing comments. Each time there is a new draft regulation version, we provide written comments. And often, our comments are centered around the limited time that we have left for implementation and the timing of the requirements.
Directly related to the COVID-19 that this is being looked at at a higher level. You know, kind of to get back on what Councilman Hume said, I think one of the issues is, I'm assuming these are going to have to have, instead of two trucks coming every garbage day, you're going to have to have three now. So I mean, so what you're gaining on one end, you're losing on the other and probably lucky to be washed when it's all done.
Yes, that's correct. That is one of the most significant aspects of the cost increases is that with the green waste can, having organics and having to go to weekly service, it would require the purchase of additional equipment, including trucks, hiring new drivers, so that every other week, there would be three trucks. On off weeks, there would be two trucks. So that is, yeah, that is a considerable part of the cost.
It's the cost. I'm talking about, it's supposed It's supposed to be for environmental reasons and whether it's that positive or not, it's still to be.
Yes, that is a very good point, yes.
All right. The what I'm about to say is obviously predicated on this whole COVID-19. My gut feeling is that we phase it out, kick it as far as we can down the line. Information date, I would be in favor of the latest, which is January 1, 2022, phasing the rate increase over time. The one follow up question I did have is, but let's let's assume that we went with the suggestion that Councilmember Hume has had put forward. What is the time between a phase out of a uploading or a front loading versus a second phase?
Apologies for the delay there. We were working on our mute button. In terms of the timing, due to the noticing increases involved, or excuse me, the noticing requirements involved with an increase, the soonest we could start front loading that would probably be January 1 of 2021, about a year in advance. And then it could be spread out incrementally incrementally every six to 12 months, depending on council preferences. We'll also have to take into consideration Republic services and what they're able to provide and the timing of the purchases that they need to make. So we'll come back with additional options once we're complete with finished working with Republic on the franchise agreement amendment that is required. But to, you know, answer your question briefly, the soonest we could do it is probably January 1 of 2021 due to noticing requirements. And we could phase it out, you know, however long it takes after that.
Okay, all right. And I would be in agreement in regards to the three bin system. I'd like more information on that. And do you have enough?
Yes, thank you for your time and happy Earth Day, everyone.
Excellent, thank you. All right, let's move to the next item.
And if I could ask staff just to unshare, thank you on the presentation, that helps out. For the next item, that'll be item 10.2, which is consider actions to establish term limits for the elected positions of mayor and council members. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. I'm Jason Lindgren. I'm your city clerk and I'll be giving a verbal presentation, an overview of this item. When we're talking about the term limits, that's for how many times folks can run. So what we already have for Elk Grove is we do have terms for the mayor, for the office of mayor. It's a two year term. And for council seats, those are four year terms. But there are no term limits for the city of Elk Grove. City of Elk Grove is a general law city. And so there are provisions under state codes that would allow for a general law city to establish term limits. So that's how many times someone can run for the same office. Within that, the provision to enact a term limit is to put a measure before the voters at one of the general elections. So for Elk Grove, that'll be in November of even numbered years. And with a majority vote from the voters, the measure passes and that would enact the term limits that are established by the measure that's put forward. One element to this is that when you talk about establishing term limits for offices, it's prospective only. So it doesn't take into account what the past history or how many terms somebody had prior. It all starts anew as far as the terms and rolling forward as to what would then limit someone as to how many terms they could serve. Well, we talk about questions as a measure and we'll get into this a little bit more in terms of the the format of the question because that's really the the discussion of the item if we see to move forward on this. But one item is to look at the timing and the pacing. And what staff's looking for tonight is direction about whether you wish to run a measure. And if so, what would be kind of the components of asking the question through a measure or measures, depending on the direction that's provided? And part of what we target is returning at the meeting of May 27. At that meeting, it is scheduled that staff will be returning with the consolidation actions to Sacramento County for running the November 2020 election. But what would also assist is if we get the measure language completed on an earlier phase, the deadline to submit measures for local agency doesn't occur until about the beginning of August prior to the election. But if we were to take action on this earlier, but it provides meeting deadlines as we move forward to allow arguments and rebuttals for the measure that would be printed in election materials. We talk about the actual measure itself. Measures are yes, no questions. They are limited to being 75 words in length. And part of that should be consideration whenever we think about a measure, its language. You might note that when we've run measures in the past, some of the questions that we ask are actually rather brief. And we use the opportunity with the remaining kind of bounty of 75 words to kind of spell out what the effect of a particular vote would be on this measure, depending on how much space we have. One of the other considerations that we have from our past practice of what we've done with measures is whether or not the council would want to consider any kind of option for outreach or education. We can't advocate for the passage or defeat of a measure as a government agency, but we can always provide information to give information about the nature of what the measure means to our community and the type of effect that it would have. That kind of sets the background about running a measure. When we get down into the actual element of talking about term limits, staff in the staff report had three kind of items to consider. The first, of course, being the number of terms. That would be one of the fixated points. It's not one that we have to decide tonight. If we were to decide to run a measure, we can come back and and kind of ruminate over how many terms would be the the ideal number. But a next element that comes in is that nature that our office of mayor has is for two years and our offices of council are for four years. And that could put things out of sync a little bit when you start talking about setting overall term limits. What the limitation that we're going to have when we discuss the language of a measure is that we can't really talk in years of in terms of years of service. We are going to be limited to talking about terms. But with that kind of kind of framework of 75 words to work with, knowing that we have two different term lengths that occur for the two different offices, we think that there's a couple of ways we could probably take an approach in order to talk about what we'd want to set as a total set of term limits and kind of matching that and pairing that up per office. When we also talk about this kind of difference between mayor and council, it opens up the options for us to look at different types of measures, maybe one for the office of mayor, one for the office of the council. And one thing to consider is when you start writing these measures, that the the longer in tooth they get as far as the writing, sometimes it can dissuade voters from participating. It just starts becoming a long measure as far as reading through the language and going through. Last part is that we talk about just kind of the placement and the language. When we go back to the language, it's that yes, no question of the measure, 75 word limit. And the placement starts becoming more of a question about if you have multiple measures, which ones are placed first on the ballot? We have some leeway when we work with our partners over at the county in the order of the placement of measures that go before voters. The last part I'll touch upon on this is as we've looked at the new costs that are coming out for the Sacramento County, one of the new costs escalators that we ended up encountering in this election cycle is taking on the cost for the vote by mail ballots to have the postage paid for folks to return ballots. And that caused something of a little bit of an increase from what we've seen in the past. And in the staff report, what we have is an estimate of $11,000 per measure when those are run before the voters. With that, that concludes the presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions?
Mayor, as Councilmember Suen, I have a question.
Go ahead.
So Jason, if in the in the difference of terms you're talking about, so if we can, if we were to do this and we only did terms, if if we if we asked the council and mayor, if the past, the public, if the council and mayor offices would be limited to whatever, two, three terms, then that would end up being obviously, you know, eight or 12 years for a council and then four, six years for mayor. You could go with that, but in the future, someone could, what if someone were to change the term of the mayor? Then it would affect, go back to the turn number of terms, correct?
Correct, Councilmember Suen. So if I understand the question, the when you talk about the term lengths for the seat of mayor and the seat of council members, council members will be fixed for general law cities at four years. Currently, our seat of mayor has been decided to be a term of two years and that was by vote of the people. That can be changed in the future. And if the term of mayor did turn into a four year term and by prior action, if we were to present a measure that was adopted that is based on the number of terms, it would effectively double the length of how the time that the mayor could preside if that changed in the future.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so making it 16 years instead of eight.
If you're, yeah, depending on how many terms you decide to do, it would it would effectively double, right? So if it was three terms, it'd be currently would only be six years, but it could expand out to 12. Or if you did four terms out to higher than, yeah, it would expand out.
Yes, thanks for the clarification.
Jason, I have a question. Did I hear you correctly? We could only limit based on terms, not necessarily years of service?
As the staff has looked at the codes, the only element that we have is to use term limits. I think what would empower, if we were to look at something like, part of it is we have the quandary of two different term lengths currently, right? Mayor's term is two years, the term for councils are four. And if we were to establish, say, that the that we were trying to get parity in having the total term number of years, I think we would be in a position that we could pose a question, either indifferent questions, say for the mayor, if the desire was to get to 12 years total, we could say for the mayor, that means they could run for six terms or the for the council, they could only run for three terms. And maybe part of the rest of the language that we could use in a measure could explain the number of years that that would equate to at the current time.
Mr. Mayor, this is your city attorney. If I could just kind of piggyback on that a little bit to address your question. I agree with the city clerk. The statute that authorizes general law cities to limit terms applies to terms. It says you may limit the number of terms. So any action taken by the council and ultimately the voters has to be done in in terms of terms, not years. But if you have a number of years you have in mind, of course, you can back into that.
I see. So let's let's assume that the council decides to put on the ballot a max of 14 years of service regardless of whether a council member or mayor. That can then translate to various different terms for different offices, right?
Yes.
But can we ask a question that includes both the office of the mayor and also council members offices? Into one question?
I'm not sure if you're asking me or Jason, but.
I'm asking either, yeah.
I'll go and answer and and I don't mean to disturb Jason's presentation, but I'll go and answer and he can he can add anything he'd like. So the statute allows you to set the terms of the city council members or the city or or the terms of the mayor or both. And so they're treated as different offices under under the governing statute. So if you wanted to limit, say, the term of mayor, you could do that. If you want to learn limit only the terms of council members, you could do that. But someone could term out in one office, council, for instance, and then run for mayor. Now, or vice versa.
Let me let me rephrase my question. Can the council put a cap on years of service, 14 years of service regardless of whether it's in in the office of the mayor or a councilman?
You can, but you would have to do it in terms of terms. So if you wanted to put 14 years total between council and mayor, you would kind of have to back into that to figure out how many terms would term you out as a council member and then how many would be as a mayor. But what you couldn't do is say 14 total across the board. Because they're treated as different office. Yeah, that's what I thought you were asking. And they're treated as different offices under the governing statute. So they're treated differently.
I see, okay.
This Vice Mayor Detrick, I've got a question. If if you were to, is there a way to pose it where you could say, let's say we just used council member two terms that equals eight years or mayor four terms that equals eight years? So it's specifically spelled out in the question?
John, if you want me to jump in on this one. I think what we could do is we, the the effect of the measure will still focus on terms, Vice Mayor. And so I think that what would happen is even if we used language to talk about the number of years, I think that Councilmember Suen has kind of illustrated a point that the actual terms of the mayor could change in the future. And I I'm not sure what we'd be able to limit by the number of years. I think someone would be able to go back and look at it from the number of terms that are stated by any action that we take today. So though we could use an illustration of the number of years to illustrate the intent of the measure, I'm not sure it would get us across the finish line, but that would be the definitive set limit of years because we still have to work in this realm of terms and that we have a moving variable that the office of the mayor could change from two to four.
I agree with that. And and to avoid confusion, I would encourage the council, if you want to go down this path, to speak in in terms of terms given the possibility that the mayor's term could change by a vote of the people.
Hi, this is Councilmember Hume. I'm not necessarily advocating for this. I'm just trying to tease out more information. Could you ask the question in such a way to to change the mayor's term and imply term limits?
You want to do that, Jason, or you want me?
There's a quick response I'll put out there that I think to change the term for the directly elected mayor, that's a separate action, but I'll defer to the city attorney on that.
Yeah, you're you're right, Jason. That's what I was going to say. So it can be done, but it would be a separate question.
Okay, so you couldn't say to the voters, would you like to change the term of the mayorship to four years and implement a two term limit? For example?
Not in the same question, that'd have to be separate question.
Okay, thank you.
Similar to when we switched to an elected mayor, I recall it saying, would you like to have an elected mayor? And then the next question after that was, would it be two years or four years, the term, correct? So we would put that all into.
Well, you're you already have an elected mayor, so that question's been answered. But then the the question, if you wanted to do extend it, and this happens from time to time, cities decide to change the term, you would you would change the term from two years to four years, ask the voters that question.
No, I know. I'm I'm saying that's kind of how we did it several years ago when we went from a rotating mayor to an elected mayor. The question was, did you want an elected mayor? And the question right after that was, how many years terms? And so in this situation, as Councilmember Hume was saying, with we wanted to change to the two year, from two year to the four year term for the mayor, we'd have to ask that question. And then the following question would be for the council, right? Term limits for the council.
If you if you want term limits for the council, I mean, what you 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 could do is have term limits for council members and not the mayor or term limits for the mayor, not the council. You could do something different for the positions or have no term limits for either or have term limits for both.
And to and what we're doing now is discussing what those are. But it still has to go to the vote of the people to decide on the term limits if if they want term or not.
That's correct.
And so if we put on there, for instance, we said we want, so the mayor can have four terms and the council can have four terms, right? They vote either yes or no, but there's there is a chance that the people may vote yes for the mayor, no for the council or no for the mayor, yes for the council, correct?
Correct.
Jason, I I have a clarification question. Let's assume that the council is supportive of this to to go on the ballot. What's the total package going to cost the city?
When we look at the method of approaching just the question about term limits. staff is comfortable with the level that we think we could approach this with one measure question. If it was to be, and the one measure would address term limits, and it would address term limits for both the mayor and for the council, that measure question costs eleven thousand dollars in order to run that consolidated for the November twenty twenty election. The other alternate cost would be if there's any kind of outreach that's projected, whether that is contracted out to some kind of outreach firm that can provide informational materials on this front, that would be an additional cost. But when you just talk about running a measure, it's eleven thousand dollars. If you split that measure into different questions, so whether you do a different question for mayor and a different question for council, you now have two measures. Each one of those is running at eleven thousand, you're twenty-two thousand. If we were to add another measure for on any front, and if it was a question about extending the term of office of mayor from that two-year term to a four-year term, that would be a that could be a third question that gets added on. And so each one of those is just going to be a multiplier times eleven thousand for every measure question that you want to run. I think where staff is comfortable on term limits, we're in the same part of the government code, whereas we dip into a different part of the government code when we start talking about the office of the directly elected mayor. And we'd have to look into that a little bit more in order to see if you wanted to do a triple-barreled question into one measure, which I think is what Councilmember Hume was hinting at.
So can a question be, would you want term limits for the mayor at four terms and council two terms? Can a compound question as such be asked? Because it all amounts to eight years each.
I think that would be the objective of putting the term questions into one measure, such as that. And it's that would be something I think we could contemplate and bring back for for consideration.
So this is this is John, your city attorney. So I think that's that's probably an option, Mayor. If you wanted to combine into one question, the term for the mayor and the term for the council members, that's probably okay. We have to take a look at that, but that sounds like that's probably okay. But I'm not comfortable that you could embed into that question, the additional question of the term of mayor to two to four years, because that's a different part of the government code that specifically calls out how that question gets asked.
I'm not sure if I understand you.
All right, so let me try again. So I think you could perhaps do what you suggested, Mr. Mayor, of saying, would you like to have, I'll just put in fake numbers, would you like to have a term limit of two terms for the mayor and two terms for the council? Question mark, yes or no? Think you could probably have that compound question. But I don't think you could add into that a third component into one question that says, would you like the mayor's term to be two years or four years? Well, in this case, four years, because we already have a two-year. That would have to be a separate question.
Okay, I I understand that. But where I'm getting with my question is to be equitable with the office of the mayor and also the council members. That's why for terms for the mayor, which currently it's two years each, so four equals eight years versus a council member, two terms would equal eight years as well. Would that type of question be permitted?
As one question.
Correct.
Yeah, I I think that's probably okay. We can go back and double check that, but that doesn't strike me as problematic, as opposed to breaking it out into two questions.
Yeah, that that makes sense. And it can't, this has to go to the public? We can't do it as a council in an ordinance?
No, this requires voter approval.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
One more question. So assuming we take the language that the mayor just said, then can we, does that mean, and I don't know if we spell this out later, but does that mean the mayor can run for the eight years, and then he can then run for council for another eight years too, or is it just eight years total on this council?
He can run, the the mayor can run for eight years on council or on as mayor, and then eight years as a council member. They're treated as separate offices.
Okay, so vice versa. Council member can do the same thing.
So, yeah, it goes the other way, too.
And to Councilmember Suen's point, if the term of the mayorship were changed, that would go from eight years as a mayor to potentially sixteen years.
That is correct.
Just to jump in, any of those types of changes in the future would require bringing another measure back. So if you were to contemplate in the at a future council, they would have to bring back a question before the voters about changing the term of mayor. At the same time, that future council could also consider a measure to talk about those term limits if they were actually changing the terms. So part of this is there, as the general law city, and I think what we've seen in the past with making these changes via the the general law kind of restraints that are there in the in the laws, we do these things, but they're very small and piecemeal to be put before the the voters.
And Jason is, speaking of general law cities, how, do you know offhand how many have term limits?
I do not. I could pull up some information on that, not at this moment, I don't think, but I could get that out to the council. Yeah.
Okay, I was just curious. Thanks.
So sort of anecdotally, and don't rely upon this, but just based on my experience, there's 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 probably not a ton. There's maybe a dozen or so. But we we can get you the number. Maybe a couple dozen. I mean, there's four hundred and some odd cities in the in the county. I I would suggest that term limits are the exception, not the norm. Folsom just instituted term limits a couple of years ago by initiative. That's one in the area that I'm familiar with. I don't know that any others in the area have 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 term limits, but I may be mistaken.
Roseville does, but what happens is they term out, they sit out an election cycle, and then they run again.
Sure. And that and that's how Folsom did it, too. I think they did four terms, and then you can sit out for four years, and you can't run more than four consecutive terms. So you, yeah, you, that is an option if the council wants to to do that, to have kind of a timeout and then come back. I didn't know it was did it that way.
It's it's not implied if you just ask the question, like, you know, if you do the term limit, it's not implied that you can just come back?
Well, well, no, what I think Councilmember Hume is saying is, it depends on how you write it. So I think what Councilmember Hume is saying, and I know Folsom did it this way, is you can't run more than four consecutive terms, and once you've done that, you can run again once you've sat out. So it's gonna, it'll be another decision point for the council if you want to go down this path. So if you just say three terms, do you want three consecutive terms or three terms total? And do you want to have this timeout period? Not to muddy the waters further. But if you just want to have, say, a straight three terms, then that's what you say, and then you're done.
And you say what Folsom has again, so they don't have a lifetime, like it's in your entire lifetime, it's.
No, I'm I'm doing this from memory, so I hope I'm getting it right, but they have four consecutive terms. I think it's similar to Roseville, what Councilmember Hume is saying, four consecutive terms, and then you can sit out a term and then run another four consecutive terms, and then sit out a four-year term. And then, I mean, by the time you do that, you're going to be fairly elderly, but they they do not allow more than four consecutive terms without a four-year break.
Okay, any other questions? All right, hearing that there are no additional questions, let's go ahead and open for public comment. Mr. Clerk, is there anyone who submitted public comment?
We do have a caller who's in, and I'm going to touch base with staff, but it's Mr. Amar Shergal, who's called in, and I'm going to touch base with staff to make sure we've got him on the line.
We do, and he's ready to go. Go ahead, Mr. Shergal.
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
You're coming in loud and clear.
Thank you. This is Amar Shergal. I'm an Elkhorn father of three. First, let me thank council and staff for all of your hard work during this public health crisis. I know that many of the council members are raising money, getting out there, getting services and goods delivered to folks in needs. Thank you all for that. With regards to term limits, I oppose. If an elected official is well-regarded by residents and they're doing a good job, they should stay. That's what elections are for. The problem in Elk Grove is that we don't have fair election. For a long time, we had elections that burdened candidates of color, and we haven't yet had a single election under the new system to give us an idea of whether term limits are a good idea. And the reason we haven't been able to get rid of poor council members previously is that we have a money problem, not a term limit problem. Council members routinely take hundreds of thousands of dollars from corporations outside the city and use that money to suppress opposition. Councilmember Swen is an example of this. He's taken over three hundred thousand dollars in recent elections just from the development and real estate industry alone. And other council members have done the same. They're taking money from CNU, and then you do press conferences for CNU. You take money from developers, then approve their projects. You take, council members take money from Costco's partners, then vote for a Costco tax break. Take money from PG&E, Republic Services, Willdan, and then listen to them, and they get a greater voice than Elk Grove residents. We need elected officials, we need our council members, the ones sitting there today, to stop taking money from corporations that don't care about Elk Grove. Why do you take corporate money from folks that don't care about us, that don't live here? Massive corporations that put profits first. Why take their money? We need campaign finance reform, not term limits. That's not the problem. Thank you.
Right, is there anyone else?
That was the conclusion of the public comments. Let me just do one quick sweep of my email, and we're, I have no other members of the public signed up to speak.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment to council deliberation and direction. Members?
I'll go first. I think, you know, it sounds like we have quite a few options here. I'm all in favor of of term limits. I believe that it really should give others an opportunity to run. We should be preparing for our future leaders. And so having term limits and and letting our our youth, young people, know that, you know, we may be terming out soon and helping them, getting them up to this level, I think it gives people an opportunity. I hear Mr. Shergal talk about, you know, now that we've changed it and we're by district, while we are by district, many people shy away when they know an incumbent is running, and so setting term limits when there's an open seat, it gives others an opportunity to see that they have a chance as well, too. That being said, though, I I want to be careful at what the limits we put are, because I appreciate the continuity, you know, having both our Vice Mayor and our Mayor or our Councilmember Hume, Vice Mayor Detrick and and Councilmember Hume being on and having a number of years behind them really helps bring the history and and have really helped me. It's taken me a while to kind of get used to this, and I'm I'm pretty involved in all of the other cities and with their council and the county as well, too. And so it's taken me some time to to learn through all this. And and having folks who've been on this council for a while and being able to see how this runs, I think it helps not just future council members and new council members, but also our city as well, too. I think that every time there's a change, the staff have to learn everybody all over again. They have to re-educate everybody all over again. But furthermore, having the history and the continuity on this council is is really important to me. I, you know, I I work for a nonprofit organization that has a board as well, too, and that's really important to me to have a board that has continuity so that I'm not re-explaining things all over again, because you could spend hours, days, and months doing that and not get work done. But when you have a council that understands and that knows, you can get things done a lot faster, right? So that, I'll stop there. I'd like to hear the rest of my colleagues.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember.
Uh, this is Councilmember Suen. I guess I'll go next. I don't know, I could go either way on this, but I was just trying to look at with the 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 term versus year conversation at hand. I was just trying to think if, you know, to get at what Councilmember Wayne mentioned about continuity. You know, we could, we could do something like instead of two terms, but three terms for both council and mayor. But maybe we do that consecutive thing that Folsom and Roseville are doing. If the mayor's term in the future changed to a four-year term, then that would that would make it on par. If it didn't, it'd be a little less, but there's also, you know, the opportunity for then the mayor to run for council if he wanted to do that. Or you know, generally speaking, our our history has been, you know, people have have become council members first and then mayor. So theoretically, in the future, it's it's maybe likely that, you know, you may only have a six-year term as a mayor, but you would have served for a time as council member anyway, so you'd still have some considerable years of service. So anyway, those are just my thoughts for now, but I'm open to other suggestions.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and jump in. I'm not in favor of term limits. I think the problem is they're indiscriminate, and they take out good public servants, as well as people that, for whatever reason, are not removed from office. You know, I I think that the reality is this job pretty well burns you out after a few terms anyway. I think Vice Mayor Detrick and myself are proof of that. And and as was mentioned, even though it was it was disparaged and cast in a a a different light, we have elections. And and people are able to remove people, remove public servants, rather, from a through the democratic process. So I I, to be honest with you, I would, if we're going to spend the money to put a question on the ballot, I'd rather put the question on the ballot of of going back to a rotating mayor, frankly, rather than than exploring term limits. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
And that's, Councilman Hume, that's an interesting segue into another option. I agree with, you know, term limits are, they are a double-edged sword. If you got somebody who's not doing a very good job, that's one way to have them term out, but if you have somebody who's doing a great job, then you're potentially losing somebody who could be a treasure for your city or whatever office it is. Personally, I think the the rotating mayor was the the best option we've had. That's my personal opinion. After seeing this over the last twelve years, I think it's, it keeps everybody fresh. Keeps them everybody on a more balanced playing field. So I I would be interested in seeing if there would be a proposal to put that question back on the ballot.
I I assume that would have to be a separate agenda item at this point.
That is correct. That's not agendized for discussion, but if the council would like to have that brought back for discussion, staff can do that.
Sure, I'll I'll bring it back.
Can we, can we, before we decide to bring that back, can we kind of figure out what this looks like first? Because it depends on what we decide today. If we're going to put something on the ballot that is going to have a term limit, why would we bring back talking about the rotating mayor? So, I mean, if we're not going to do anything about term limits, then let's kill this now, and then let's talk about bringing back having the opportunity to put a rotating mayor back on the ballot instead.
If that's emotional, second it.
Well, or 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 we could figure out a proposal to unless there's not a, unless we don't have consensus to to even consider it, but we could figure out a proposal that that would come back anyway and bring it the same time with the you know, the rotating mayor. And then we could make the final decision then on both.
Mr. Senate Attorney, if you can jump in here, is, can we talk about both, or is this?
So tonight you should focus on term limits, make whatever decision you want to on that, whether you want to pursue that or not. And then if you want to come back with the notion of eliminating the elected mayor, making it a rotating mayor, we can't have a full discussion about that tonight, but you can direct it to be brought back.
If I can weigh in, though, John, couldn't we, for all intents and purposes, continue this item? And/or, uh, you know, just no action on this item and direct staff to come back with a more comprehensive look at elections in Elk Grove?
Yes, you could do that. That is another option, you're correct.
Okay.
So this is, um, this is my concern. Um, uh, you know, I'm, I'm not necessarily opposed to term limits, um, and I'm, I'm not committed to one way or the other. I do recognize some of the things that, um, the members have said, particularly what the vice mayor have said. You could potentially have somebody who's doing a terrible job or somebody who's doing a good job and that person is now, has to be ousted, uh, because of term limits. So that, I think that's a very valid argument. Um, I think that, um, uh, more of my, my concern is consistency across the board. Uh, I think that if, in the event that we're gonna go in the direction of, um, of term limits, there's gotta be an articulation of, um, you know, an X amount of years, uh, that's equitable for both the office of the mayor and also the office of the council member. I think that makes logical sense. The other, uh, concern that I have is the cost. This $11,000 does not include outreach, uh, and, um, it could potentially cost more. And during this, um, COVID-19, uh, we're talking about, um, cutting back. We're talking about reducing revenues that's coming in. And, um, it may be, well, uh, a good, um, good, uh, with, with good intentions of, of bringing this to council and having discussion. I'm not sure if this is the right time to talk about, um, adding more cost to the city. Um, I'm open to bringing this, um, once we recover, uh, but, um, I'm not sure if, um, you know, adding more cost to the city makes any logical sense at the moment. But one, one additional thought as well is, uh, if we were to go in the direction of, uh, term limits, uh, I think that it would also make logical sense that we apply term limits across the board, including boards and commissions, uh, that report to the city council. It would be, um, it wouldn't make any sense if we continue to have boards and members that serve, um, uh, as long as they, they would like, uh, and then have a limit on, uh, elected, um, where we are actually vetted by the people. Uh, and those that are in appointed positions, uh, are not vetted by the people and are given a free pass. So, uh, those are my thoughts.
So then I, I would be interested in, in doing as I had suggested and either tabling this or, or just letting it die for lack of a, a motion and, uh, bringing a more comprehensive look at elections in Elk Grove where we can discuss more than just term limits.
And I would support that, uh, Councilmember Hume. Um, I just, my gut feeling is this is just the wrong time because we're talking about adding more cost to the city. And I know that, uh, we, we want to do good for the community, uh, but, um, you know, to tack on any sort of additional item that would require, uh, more monies out of the city's coffers is a great concern of mine.
I support Councilmember Hume's, uh, motion. I believe that while we're putting money in, it's for, um, the discussion of what's going to be best for our city. So I support Councilmember Hume's motion.
Uh, let me clarify this, uh, Councilmember Hume, did you not say that you wanted to table this or, or kick it down?
I wanted to, I wanted to table the item of only discussing, uh, discussing term limits and to bring back, uh, an item on a future agenda that, uh, opens up the other options that we had discussed tonight.
Sure, that makes sense, yeah. I'm open to that. So, uh, Councilmember Wayne, did, are you agreeing with that or I, I heard something different from you?
Oops, yes, I'm agreeing, that's what I said. I agreed to what he's saying.
So can I, can I ask for clarity on that? I think I understand what Councilmember Hume is saying, but the item you brought back would not include a discussion of term limits because that would be tabled or you do want that to be brought back?
Uh, I would suggest that that gets brought back, uh, with the discussion of, of basically just bringing back what question we would like to put on the ballot if we want to put anything on the ballot. Can you have that general of a, of a item?
Yeah, I understand what you want now. Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll support that, just a comprehensive conversation, uh, on those items.
Makes total sense.
All right, sounds good. Um, all right, uh, staff, you have what you need?
I believe so.
I, I just want to, I just want to clarify though that ju- just for the, when you say future item, Councilmember Hume, you, are you talking about this election cycle or are you talking about what the mayor was inferring about after?
I'm assuming as soon as staff could bring it back.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to clarify. All right, thanks.
Okay, uh, let's move to the next item.
And with that, that'll take us on to item 10.3, which is to consider actions to establish local campaign contribution limitations.
Mayor, Vice Member, members of the council, hopefully if I did it right, you'll see a short PowerPoint presentation that I will go through quickly on campaign contribution limits. This is, uh, and it comes back in tandem with your prior item when the council asked to have this item back along with the term limit. So I'll give you a brief presentation on where we are and what we can do. So the current parameters for campaign contribution limits are cities, including general law cities, may impose local campaign contribution limits, uh, by ordinance or resolution. Elk Grove currently does not have campaign contribution limits. However, campaign contributions expenditure and expenditures are disclosed through your 460 filings, which are public record. Some cities and municipalities in Sacramento County do have contribution limits. Galt has $100, Folsom has $150. Uh, City of Sacramento is a little bit tricky because it has different parameters, but generally it's, uh, it's 1750. For council members, mayors are 3,500. There are some different nuances where what they call large political committees who have different report or different contribution limits and committees that contribute directly to candidates who also have different ones. But the basic limitation is 1750 for council members, 3,500 for mayors. The County of Sacramento in a non-election years, 250 election years is 1,200. A full list of cities and municipalities, including counties who have contribution limits, is at the FPPC link, which is in your packet throughout the state. It will identify which ones have limitations. And these limitations are per person slash entity per election. Uh, last year, Assembly Bill 57, 571 was passed imposing additional, uh, limitations or authority on cities with respect to campaign contribution limitations. What that bill says is that cities will have the same contribution limits as the state senate and the state assembly with inflation adjusters that are built into statute. That's currently $4,700 per person or entity, which includes corporations per elections. Cities may establish different limits. I put the word different in quotes, uh, because it doesn't say they have to be higher or lower. It just says they have to be different. And the FPPC has provided admittedly non-binding and formal advice that a city could even, uh, pass an ordinance that says we have no limits, if that would be the choice of a city. But the bottom line is if the city takes no action, as of January 1st, 2021, the limits will be $4,700 for local contribution. So that would be your default if you took no action at all. Independent expenditures, this was brought up at the prior council meeting, that the council directed staff to bring this back. Independent expenditures are slightly different and an independent expenditure is an expenditure essentially made not in coordination with a candidate. A group gets together and supports a measure or a candidate, but doesn't coordinate with that candidate. The United States Supreme Court has said that those constitute core First Amendment rights and that, uh, the government cannot place limits on those types of contributions as concerns corporations, persons, or other entities. So the basic discussion points that I offer for the council are, does the city council want to impose local campaign contribution limits? Um, and if so, what amounts? And again, if you, if you do nothing, then your limits will default to the 4,700 effective the 1st of next year. And I'm gonna try to stop sharing my screen here, so give you a chance to ask any questions you might have because that's all that I have as far as the presentation. So hopefully that stopped. Happy to answer your questions or address any comments you might have.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. This is Pat. John, is it only, uh, speak as to contributions or is there a way to, uh, establish a limit for campaign spending?
So I'm not aware of any, um, provision that would limit campaign spending. Frankly, I hadn't looked at that issue, Councilmember, if I could. But all of the statutes that we've been looking at deal with campaign contributions, not necessarily spending. So I'd, I'd have to take a closer look at that if that's something that we wanted to do. I don't think, uh, off, off the cuff, I don't think that you could have that limitation because I think that that's gonna implicate First Amendment rights.
Hmm, okay. Well, and the only reason why I bring that up is because obviously there's two sides to every financial equation. And i- if you're only targeting the income side and not the expense side, then, you know, you're, you're either driving the money underground, as you'd mentioned, through an IE or you're encouraging self-funding, uh, or you're forcing, uh, candidate to, uh, be a more prolific fundraiser uh, and spend their time doing that rather than getting out, discussing the issues. So, um, that's why I was wondering if there was a way to say that a campaign can only spend X amount.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have the answer to that. My, my gut reaction, I admit it's only gut reaction, is that's probably not gonna be allowed, but I would have to look at that.
Okay, thank you. It's, uh, it's not important, we, we'll see how it goes.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Uh, one question, one more question, Mr. Hawes, I'm sorry. So the 4,700 is good up until December and then they change it again come January, right? 2021, right? So it's gonna change once again.
No, no, uh, well, right, the number will change every two years. That's the current limit and it's on a two-year cycle, so it will adjust.
Okay, okay.
It just adjusts with the CPI index, which, you know, this year it's probably not gonna be very high. Uh, but it tends to run around, you know, between 2 and 4%.
Okay, any other questions? All right, no questions. Um, let's, uh, go ahead and open for public comment. Mr. Clark, are there anyone who submitted public comment?
And yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have Mr. Ammar Sherghil signed up for this item and he's, uh, dialing in. I think we have him on the phone and we just need to patch him through.
Okay.
We do. Go ahead, Mr. Sherghil.
All right, can you hear me okay?
Loud and clear.
Thank you. Uh, this is Ammar Sherghil in Elk Grove, father of three. On the issue of the contribution limits, they alone won't fix the problem. We actually need two additional items to discuss. One is a better transparency on your filing and the other is a better notice of who is paying for, um, campaign ads. So right now you upload your 460s and they're very difficult to go through. They're not searchable and the transparency is lacking. It's an antiquated system. I don't see why we continue to do that. What we need is a simple upload. You just ask your campaign treasurer to give you the five years' worth of, um, contributions in a simple spreadsheet and you upload that and it will cost you money. Then anybody can, uh, log in and see exactly who gets how much, how often. And you can see that, for instance, Councilmember Swen has taken $300,000 over the past few cycles from real estate and development folks. And, uh, and ask them, why are you taking that money? Um, second issue is notice. Um, campaign communications, um, shouldn't include just the name of the organization, something lame like Elk Grove Residents for Progress. It tells us nothing. What we need is a list of contributors on the ads, texts, and mailers. Uh, state law does that. You can put the top five, uh, contributors on, uh, a mailer so you know who's paying for it. The last election, we had a racist ad against Mayor Lee and supporting Councilmember Swen. That never would have seen the light of day if PG&E had to put their name on a racist ad. So it's an easy fix, just put the top five contributors on there. And to discourage just PAC involvement in general, because those corporations don't want to put their names on attack ads and racist ads. Uh, finally turning to the limits themselves, we should be clear. The only folks in Elk Grove that give more than $1,000 are, uh, business people with interests outside of Elk Grove. The vast majority of that money, $1,000 and more, comes from outside of Elk Grove. If we limit to $500 per person or $1,000 per couple, we put control in the hands of local folks. The local folks are giving those small dol- dollars, they live here. Any council member that says, "I want more than $1,000," is doing so because they don't have support in Elk Grove and they can't raise small dollar amounts from local folks. Any council member that says, "I want more than $1,000," is doing so because they want corporate money to control politics in Elk Grove. They want to serve corporations that don't care about us. Everybody listening in now should pay very close attention. Which council members want high-limit corporate money? Which council members want low-limit corporate money, uh, want low limits to stop corporate money from coming into Elk Grove? Some folks will say that this is false spectrum of PACs, but we don't have a problem with PACs. If we put those notice requirements, have to put the top five on the advertisements, we're gonna stop having a problem with PACs. So, um, I encourage everyone, listen very closely. See which, uh, council members want corporate money, big dollar money, and which don't.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sherghil. Um, is there anyone else, Jason?
I believe that was, those were the comments from Mr. Sherghil, but we got another request, uh, to get another caller who's calling in and it looks like it's, um, Ms. Denessa Attilis. And I think it'll just take us a little bit in order to get her on the phone and patch her through. But I know our city team's working on that right now. So if you just give it a moment, we're pulling up the next speaker.
All right.
And for our viewing public, this is just a process we have to go through. We patched through our, to our caller and then bring them into, uh, the meeting format here. And our city staff have been doing a great job in order to reach out to folks, pull them in and, uh, give them the opportunity for their public comment. Thank you all for your patience as we're going through this process.
Hi, Jason, I have the caller on the line for you.
Excellent.
Go ahead, Mrs. Attilis.
Hi, this is Denessa Attilis, District 1 constituent. Um, I am in support of, uh, campaign finance reform as well as, um, limiting donations, $500, even $1,000. I am not terribly committed to a particular number, but something that is low enough, like Mr. Sherghil said, so that an influx of outside of the city money isn't, um, what is dictating who wins and, and rents in our elections for Elk Grove. I, I am less concerned about term limits, although I think term limits do have a place in some, um, institutions. I don't know if that's necessarily something that's holding us back here in Elk Grove. Um, but I am really baffled and confused why, in the middle of a pandemic, our city council is taking up things like this that are something that we should be able to look our city council person in the eye and have this debate with in a public forum. Um, you know, noticing us just via the Brown Act that this is gonna be upcoming is not enough time to have a public discourse on this. Even if decisions aren't made tonight, this is the wrong time to be bringing up these very important issues. The wrong time to be considering giving resolutions to, uh, city constituents. I would expect much better of our city council, um, focusing on things that are going to improve and affect the lives of our Elk Grove citizens and constituents, um, during a time where people are really suffering and don't have the time to come on a city council meeting and go through this process, which is actually very good. I'm very impressed with the process of being able to call in and I appreciate that, um, things keep improving as we are having to social distance. But to be honest, the majority of constituents, A, aren't aware enough to be able to learn that process and B, don't have the wherewithal and capacity to be able to participate meaningfully in these very important discussions, which seem to be being added to these agendas in the midst of a pandemic because of the inability of constituents to be able to participate in this process. It's being rushed through and intentional. And I'm a little shocked and dismayed that the council's freely considering some of these things. That's the extent of my comments. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Langren, is there anyone else?
Uh, and I did a scan of my email box and I don't have any other requests to speak on item 10.3. That concludes the public comment.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment and council deliberation and direction.
and direction. Members?
This is Vice Mayor Detrick. Yeah, I, I think with the, the new guidelines from the state of California, I think there's so many options out there, whether somebody wants to personally finance, they want to individually do $100 donations from donors, or they want to try to push for larger limits from businesses, or very generous residential donors. I think the system works well. It's an expression of freedom of speech, and I think we should just follow the state guidelines and move on.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Any other members?
Yeah, this is Councilmember Soon. Yeah, I kind of agree with the last speaker about even talking about this topic, but, you know, it's okay. We, I think, given that, you know, the council made a decision to go to by district, I think, you know, reduces somewhat the need to fundraise as much. And so I think an AB 571 seemed to kind of did the work for us. I mean, a lot of these numbers are arbitrary, whether you want to do 100, 500, 150. I mean, a lot of these, there doesn't seem to be a rhyme or reason. So I think the state, the legislature seemed to settle on something. That's, I think it's worth just, you know, giving it a shot, and, you know, we can go from there if we need to do more restrictions or make some other change. So that's it. Thanks.
This is
I'm good.
This is your city attorney, John Hobbs. If I could just chime in for just a moment, I want to try to address Councilmember Hume's question about expenditure limits. And based admittedly on some very quick research I did here while you guys were talking, it looks like expenditure limits would probably be invalid, is an unconstitutional infringement on speech. Contribution limits are permitted by statute, and I could look into that further. It may be mooted, depending on what happens with the council communications tonight. But it looks like it probably would not be allowed, Councilmember Hume.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hobbs. I would be in favor of just following what the state has put the limit as, following their guidelines.
So, Mr. Hobbs, I have a question.
Okay.
If the city council desires, we can actually put, put no limits. And with that, will we still have to abide by the state's law, or can we have an exception if we're to decide not to?
So, interestingly, the statutes appear to allow you to expressly say that there are no limits, if that's something that you wanted to do, and you'd pass an ordinance saying there are no limits. It seems like a somewhat unusual approach, but the statute seemed to allow for that. And if you did that, then you would not be subject to the state limits of $4,700.
I see.
So if you, the point is if you do nothing, then it defaults to the state limits. That's the way the legislation was set up.
Oh, okay.
But you could take a different path if you so chose.
Yeah, I'm, to be honest, I'm conflicted with this. And I, I hear the, the issues raised by the speakers and some of the concerns by the council member. My, my struggle is this, for, for current IE's that have limitation, you would want a candidate to be able to raise enough money to counter what IE is doing. And so I understand that that's, that's protected as previous speech. And so my, the balance, the balance to that, obviously, is for those that don't have the ability to raise the amount of money, but yet still wants to be engaged. You know, I, at this point, I think one of the speakers mentioned it, why are we discussing this? The priority should be on how to address some of the needs in the community. And so at this point, I'm, I'm fine with leaving it as, as is. But, you know, and I'm certainly not ruling out the possibility of reviewing this again in the future. And my interest is just equity, level the playing field, so that candidates can run. Do you have what you need, Mr. Hobbs?
Yes, sir. We will do nothing for the time being.
All right, excellent. All right, I think that is it. So let's go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 8:30 PM. Thank you, everyone. Be safe.